We'll call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order. We will call on Commissioner Schaefer for our prayer and then Commissioner P. will lead us in the pledge.
I served in the military for a while when I was in a combat zone. And a friend of mine that I go to church with also served over in Southeast Asia. The difference was, he was in the Army. And one thing he told me was that there are no atheists in foxholes. And I'd just like tonight for everyone here to please pray for our military service men and women. And if you don't believe in praying or whatever, think about them. Because unless you've been away from home at Christmas and serving overseas or something like that, that it's an awful hard time. And I'd just ask you to bow your heads in prayer with me. And we'd like to lift up tonight Mr. Roger Allen, who's the head of our EMA here. He just went through surgery and he needs your prayers. And also I'd ask you for the school board member, Mr. Wayne Blair's family. And this is titled "A Christmas Prayer." Loving Father, help us remember the birth of Jesus, that we may share in the song of the angels, the gladness of the shepherds, and the wisdom of the wise men. Close the door of hate and open the door of love all over the world.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Let kindness come with every gift and good desires with every greeting.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Deliver us from evil by the blessing which Christ brings and teach us to be merry with
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
clean hearts.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
May the Christmas morning make us happy to be your children and the Christmas evening
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
bring us to our beds with grateful thoughts, forgiving and forgiving for Jesus' sake.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Chirino.
Here.
Twenty-one present.
Thank you very much. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Amen.
Amen.
Do we have a motion concerning their approval?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to
Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chairman, I move that they be approved as mailed.
You have a second? Commissioner Cook? Did anyone have any corrections or additions?
the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
All in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
for all.
Now we'll ask the Director of our Health Department, Ms. Dana Garrett, to come forward and bring with her the Commissioner of Health, Ms. Susan Cooper, and others that will be joining her. Mr. Wright is on their board of the Health Department and they have a presentation that they'd like to make. An exciting presentation that we would much appreciate. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
So, thanks Mayor.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
It's really a pleasure for me to be back in Rutherford County.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
One of the first things I got to do when I assumed the Commissioner's job was to really
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
celebrate the renovation of the Smyrna Health Department Clinic.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
And it's only fitting at the end of four years, I'm coming back to Rutherford County. I'm joined by Dana Garrett, our County Health Director, and Dr. Ronald Wright, the Chair of the Board of Health. And if you'll give me just a minute of personal privilege here, and I've never found a microphone I didn't like. But I'd like for all the folks from the Health Department who have come on their own tonight to join us for this, because this is as much a gift for them as it is for the county. You know, I want all of y'all to know that these folks work tirelessly every single day to protect, promote, and improve the health of the folks that live in your county. They're the first ones to show up when there's an emergency and they're the last ones to leave. And you never have to ask them. They just do it from their hearts. And so, I really want you to know what an extraordinary group of people these folks are and if you would join me in just showing your appreciation for the work that they do. It really is my privilege and my honor to serve them because they are just extraordinary and really set the bar for other folks across the state. But now to the business at hand, you know, we're all facing some challenging economic times. And it's not often that you get to come bearing a gift of money. We are here to celebrate tonight a grant from the U.S. Department of Agriculture that came to the State of Tennessee to expand services through our WIC program, which is the Women Infant and Children's Supplemental Nutrition Program. And this program is one that serves low-income, pregnant and breastfeeding mothers and children up to the age of five. And, you know, in your county, just like all the other counties across the state, there are folks having a hard time. And the Health Department stands ready to help extend a helping hand to folks who need it most. The WIC program has been up and running in Rutherford County for years and years. And just in the past 12 months, there have been almost 10,000 residents of this county that have been served. There have been over 26,000 encounters. And about 6,000 of the patients have been seen in the Murfreesboro site and about 3,800 were seen in the Smyrna site. But as you all know, that Smyrna building's a little bit smaller than the one right here in downtown. You know, I also want to say that, you know, with these programs, what's really interesting about WIC is that it serves as an economic engine as well, because along with the education that mothers get around nutrition for mothers and babies, there's also supplemental vouchers that are given. And just in the past 12 months, just here in Rutherford County, more than $3.9 million was redeemed in area stores that participate in the WIC program. So as you can see, this is about $325,000 a month that come back into your economy. And so, we're really pleased tonight to say that the funding that's coming to this county will go specifically to your Smyrna clinic. We're going to be adding space and we're really excited about this. This money's going to fund a new classroom so that we can hold the educational classes, two new clinic rooms, two counseling rooms, a new registration area so that the WIC mothers can get in and out in a more expeditious manner. And so, on behalf of the USDA... You're supposed to be down here, aren't you? You're the mayor. Golly. You know, usually they're standing there tapping their toes, waiting for the check. That's good. So, I'll try to get it right side up this time. But on behalf of the United States Department of Agriculture that funds the WIC program and the State of Tennessee, it's really my pleasure to present to you a check for $699,937 to fund the expansion of this clinic.
Thank you very, very much. Well, on behalf of all the citizens of Rutherford County, we want to thank the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the Tennessee Commissioner of Health, of whatever, for this. We very much appreciate it and it will be used very, very wisely and constructively and we're just honored that you've come and presented that to us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for the application from here. This was a competitive program and there were only a handful of counties across the state that received these funds. So, thank you Mayor for all that you do and thank you all Council for what you do as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for that good positive start to this meeting. Next, we have a resolution of sympathy for Amy Williams and we're calling on Commissioner Jernigan to read that resolution, please.
I'd like to call any of the family of Mr. Williams up if they're present. Whereas it is with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Amy Amelia Jane Amy Threet Williams, a friend of many. Whereas Mrs. Williams is survived by her sons Dale B. Williams and his wife Rhonda Wayne W. Williams and his wife Donna and grandchildren Jeremy, Rebecca, Daniel, and Hannah Williams. And whereas Mrs. Williams was employed by the Rutherford County Government for most of her adult life, she worked for several years in the county court clerk's office and then a year for Murfreesboro Bank and Trust. She was appointed as Rutherford County Election Administrator in 1975 where she served until her retirement in the year 2000. And whereas she was a member of the Tennessee Association of County Elected Officials, serving a term as Treasurer of the statewide organization, and whereas we know that her passing has caused great sadness to her family and friends. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 16th day of December 2010 does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Amy Williams. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Mrs. Williams by the clerk of this legislative body. I so move.
Second, Commissioner Jordan and Jordan. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you very much. And thank you for sharing your mom and for so many years with us and the great service that she's provided to our county and all of our citizens. Thank you. Okay. Next, we're going to call on Commissioner Turner to read a resolution of recognition regarding the First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ask any of the Smyrna Commissioners to join me and also our friends from the First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna, if they could please come up front. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners should recognize those persons and organizations that unconditionally serve others and consistently have a positive impact on the people of Rutherford County. Whereas it has come to the attention of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna is one such outstanding organization, recently celebrating 200 years history. And whereas First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna was originally founded in 1810 in the old Jefferson area in a small log structure by early settlers of Rutherford County. Whereas notably, the town of Smyrna was named after First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna at the suggestion of Congregate Silas Tucker. Whereas during the Civil War, the original 1810 log structure was unfortunately disassembled by Union soldiers and the parts used by them for war purposes. Whereas although their first church building had been taken during the war, their faith and commitment remained steadfast, with the congregation constructing a new brick facility for church use in the year 1867. The members of the First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna decided to relocate the church in 1912 to a site off of present-day Lowry Street near the historic area of the town of Smyrna, constructing an ornate facility there. Whereas after a dreadful fire consumed that building in 1924, the congregation rebuilt a new structure that was completed in 1925, which housed the church for the next 75 years until the year 2000. And whereas the members of First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna voted in 1993 to merge with South Trinity Presbyterian Church and construct a beautiful new building on Sam Ridley Parkway in Smyrna that now serves as the church's present location. Whereas the First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna has an excellent reputation for service to others through both its expansive ministries for its members and programs to help those in needs throughout the entire community. Whereas the members of First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna enthusiastically support such programs as the Smyrna-Laverne Food Bank, Meals on Wheels, the Presbyty of Middle Tennessee Hunger Program, Smyrna-Laverne Assistance Coalition, disaster relief, and evangelism efforts. Whereas because of its unwavering commitment to service, First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna has been a vital part of Rutherford County's past. With respect to religious heritage and based on its history, First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna will no doubt be a vibrant, active force in the future. Whereas for 200 years, the members of First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna have been faithful servants, dedicated to serving the people in both the Smyrna area and around the globe with great love and selflessness, all to the benefit of Rutherford County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna be recognized and congratulated for its loyal and devoted service to the Kingdom over the last two centuries. Be it further resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners wishes great success and satisfaction for the leaders and members of First Presbyterian Church of Smyrna as they continue to serve for the coming years, both in the town of Smyrna and Rutherford County. Resolved this 16th day of December 2010, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Stevens. All in favor of this, please say aye. Thank you very, very much for 200 years of great service to this county and its citizens. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we will have Commissioner Baum to come and give us a resolution of recognition in regard to the 2010 Segal High School Band. Mr. Baum?
Thank you. And we'd like to invite the band members and their directors to come up here too, please. Okay, great. Whereas being the longest-running marching band competition in the United States, the 49th Contest of Champions was hosted by Middle Tennessee State University at Floyd Stadium on October 31st, 2010. This contest is considered by many as Tennessee's state championship for marching bands. Twenty-six of the finest bands in Tennessee, Kentucky, and Alabama performed for adjudicators in preliminary competition and eight bands were selected for spots to compete for in the finals portion. The Segal High School Band received the highest honor and the title of Grand Champion for their exceptional execution of their 2010 program, Immortal. This is Segal High School's second victory in a row as they were named the Grand Champion of the 48th Contest of Champions in 2010. And whereas under the music direction of Randy Rhodey and Ed Medford, assisted by Annette Rhodey and Jerry Stein-Hilber, and led by the enthusiastic drum major, Matt Bowe, Segal's band has been successful the entire season with early-season championships at the Columbia Invitational and winning the Chancellor's Cup for the large-division championship of the Vanderbilt Marching Invitational. The band placed second at the Southern Invitational in Atlanta, Georgia, and won the Mayor's Cup for the championship of the Music City Invitational in Nashville. And whereas this has been an exciting and successful season, special commendation is due to all 160 band members for their hard work which made these championships possible and for bringing this fine publicity to our community by their professionalism, dedication, and commitment to excellence. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2010 Segal High School Band on all their accomplishments, especially by being named Grand Champion at the MTSU Contest of Champions and to the band directors and their staff for their dedication and commitment to these young ladies and gentlemen. Resolved this 16th day of December 2010, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Jordan, second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you and congratulations, young people. And directors? I think the director would like to say a few words, please.
I know Mr. Rhodey wanted to be here tonight. He's feeling a little bit under the weather, so I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank our great parent organization that leads the fundraising and helps the band throughout the year to raise the funds necessary to make all this happen. And I'd also like to thank Annette Rhodey, who's our color guard instructor, who does a great job with those girls all year round. We have a great percussion instructor, Jerry Stein-Hilber, who's, you know, he's with those guys all year round. And really, the big thank you I want to give to these students that you see before you. They work many hours throughout the year and it's just amazing what they're able to do with the guidance of all the parents and the great staff that we have at our school. I really appreciate it and these guys really are champions. They work very hard for that honor. And thank you all for honoring them tonight and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And tonight, we have three people that wish to speak. And the first person is Elizabeth Coker. And we will remind the speakers that they have three minutes to say what they'd like to say to our citizens. Give us your name and address.
Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to you all. Commissioners, Mayor Burgess, ladies and gentlemen who are here with us tonight in our lovely Mary Courthouse, it's beautifully decorated for the season. Tis the season to be jolly. Unfortunately, we have some unfinished business to attend to before we can address the issue of merriment of the season. Since generally, our court system does not directly communicate with county government, I would like to offer you a copy of the summary ruling of the Court as it pertains to the preliminary hearing that just was handed down from Judge Robert Corleau's office. I was here earlier this afternoon and some of you have already gotten the hard copies. And if you would like me to email you a copy, I'll be glad to do that as well, whichever you prefer. Because I only have just two minutes left, I'm going to read some excerpts that directly address the discrepancies in our zoning ordinance directed expressly to the Commission for remediation by Judge Corleau. And the first one up has to do with forgery. There was determined that there was a forgery on the site plan. I don't believe that our commission, our planning commission can tolerate that. However, the discrepancy there is, there is no provision in our zoning ordinance. So that is definitely one I know you want to address. I'm going to read specifically from page 33. "In the interest of full disclosure, we think that the members of the Commission should be informed as to the existence of a single grave," and they're referring to the one on Vills Road. "Further, there's evidence that the proper procedure may not have been followed as to the single burial," which we brought to your attention in August and again when we asked for the resignation of Mr. Demasi back in September and again in November. On page 37, it says, "What we do not approve is the construction of a facility for the advocacy of entities which threaten the national security of the United States to include terrorists identified by William Clinton in the January 95 executive order during which time Mr. Clinton served as President at all. Further, we do not affirm that the use of the proposed facility by advocates of Sharia law nor the advocates of violence as illustrated in the copies of downloads from the websites introduced into evidence during the plaintiff's presentation. We don't approve the construction of the facilities for the supporters of the North American Islamic Trust to the extent that evidence shows that this body is in fact a supporter of jihad. We must recognize that the Regional Planning Commission has approved the site of this construction and we authorize our sheriff that the law may be enforced by local law enforcement." You can read the rest of this yourself, but as I...
Thank you, Mrs. Coker.
As I hope you will take the time to do. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Jeff Lee from Middle Tennessee Medical Center that would like to give us, I believe, a resolution of appreciation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here on behalf of Gordon Ferguson, President and CEO of the hospital. And I want to read you a short letter addressed to Mayor Burgess and the Commission and a resolution. At its regular quarterly meeting, the Board of Directors of Middle Tennessee Medical Center approved the attached resolution. It's my pleasure to present this document to the Rutherford County Commission and to offer you my own note of appreciation for the assistance provided by the Emergency Management Services staff in the relocation of our patients to the new MTMC. I am especially grateful to Mr. Randy White for helping our leadership team coordinate this particular aspect of our move. As you know, it's not often that an opportunity to build a complete replacement hospital comes along. To be part of an entirely new development within the city and county made this project even more special. There's no question that Murfreesboro and Rutherford County, Tennessee was the very best place for Ascension Health to invest over $267 million. We're also very pleased to have started construction on the Seton Medical Office Building, which is scheduled to be opened, completed by the end of 2011. Once again, thank you for the support Rutherford County has provided relative to our relocation activities on October 2nd, 2010. The need for the new facility is being validated by the fact that we are accelerating our plan to have all 286 beds staffed and in operation. This is a credit to the outstanding physicians and associates who are committed to providing compassionate care to those we all serve. And it is also a testimony to the community's confidence in our ability to provide these services. And the resolution reads, "Whereas Rutherford County played a critical role in the safe transfer of Middle Tennessee Medical Center's patients from North Highland Avenue to Medical Center Parkway, and whereas the Middle Tennessee Medical Center Board of Directors would like to acknowledge the hard work, dedication, and support of Rutherford County and the Rutherford County Emergency Management Services, now let it therefore be resolved that the Board of Directors of Middle Tennessee Medical Center offers its deep appreciation and sincere gratitude to Rutherford County and to the Rutherford County Emergency Management Services for its cooperation in advanced planning and providing needed ambulance services and trained personnel to ensure a safe and timely transfer of patients on October 2nd from Highland Avenue to the new campus on Medical Center Parkway. Hereby, this resolution is presented for adoption on the second day of October, December 2010. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Lee. We really appreciate that and we all do appreciate the great new facility you have. And we thank our EMS services for a great assistance in this move and we're just honored that you've come and presented us with this tonight. Thank you very much. We can... Next is Mr. Donald Todd.
The need for the new facility is being validated by the fact that we are accelerating our plan to have all 286 beds staffed and in operation. This is a credit to the outstanding physicians and associates who are committed to providing compassionate care to those we all serve, and it is also a testimony to the community's confidence in our ability to provide these services. And the resolution reads, "Whereas Rutherford County played a critical role in the safe transfer of Middle Tennessee Medical Center's patients from North Highland Avenue to Medical Center Parkway, and whereas the Middle Tennessee Medical Center Board of Directors would like to acknowledge the hard work, dedication, and support of Rutherford County and the Rutherford County Emergency Management Services, now let it therefore be resolved that the Board of Directors of Middle Tennessee Medical Center offers its deep appreciation and sincere gratitude to Rutherford County and to the Rutherford County Emergency Management Services for its cooperation in advanced planning and providing needed ambulance services and trained personnel to ensure a safe and timely transfer of patients on October the second from Highland Avenue to the new campus on Medical Center Parkway. Hereby this resolution is presented for adoption on the second day of October, December 2010. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Lee. We really appreciate that, and we all do appreciate the great new facility you have, and we thank our EMS services for a great assistance in this move, and we're just honored that you've come and presented us with this tonight. Thank you very much. We can- Next is Mr. Donald Todd.
I'm Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. 2010 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Rutherford County. Tennessee state auditors have completed a financial report for our county, which is dated on June thirtieth, 2010. The county has a total debt of $522,510,000. Over the past six years, the total debt, including principal and interest, has remained close to or above $1.5 billion. This is entirely unacceptable to us taxpayers, and if plans to build new schools continue to develop, our debt will increase beyond the point of our ever being able to pay it off. Bankruptcy would be inevitable. Just as private citizens need to adjust their spending for things they would like and things they need during hard times, so should our government. Because of our economic crisis, we need to make critical decisions. One of them concerns a state law, Title forty-nine, Chapter three, Paragraph three fourteen. When a budget for education is being considered, this law has a requirement that the new budget should not be less than the budget appropriation for the previous fiscal year. This is the maintenance of local funding effort requirement, this without any regard for the state of the economy of the time. Prudence dictates that we, as one state legislator suggests, set aside this law, make some sacrifices, and postpone school building projects until the economy improves. It is better to make these sacrifices now than to saddle our children with debt they will not be able to pay off in their lifetimes. You will be interested to know that during the last four fiscal years, twenty or twenty-one percent of the money appropriated to the annual budgets is not being used for the purposes that are specified in the budgetary appropriation. Much more accountability is needed to prevent surplus revenue from being spent for purposes not originally approved of in the original budget, such as the purchase of certificates of deposit. The money is not returned to the taxpayers and is not rolled over into the next fiscal year's budget. It simply disappears off the radar scope and is not seen again. According to the current annual financial report dated June thirtieth, 2010, the state auditors indicate that the total surplus revenue balance for several funds is approximately $81 million. That much surplus means we are being overtaxed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Next agenda item is elections and confirmations, and Mr. Phillips will, Commissioner Phillips will handle that item.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. First on our agenda is the election of notaries, and do I need to stop? First on our agenda is the election of notaries. You have the list in front of you, and Mayor Burgess, I move that they be approved.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any discussion? All those in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
We need to announce two vacancies on the Conservation Board, and we need to fill three vacancies on the Agricultural Advisory Board. Steering Committee recommends, number one is the Commissioner's vacancy, and the Steering Committee recommends Steve Sandlin. We also have a vacancy for a farmer, and Steering Committee recommends Anthony Scales. And we have a vacancy for a farm woman, and the Steering Committee recommends Della Goodman, and I move for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Any discussion? All in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Item number four is to fill two vacancies on the Correctional Work Center Board. The Steering Committee recommends Mr. Tom Hartley and Mr. Virgil Gammon, and I move for their approval.
Second, and who was that? Commissioner Farley. Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mr. Grant Kelly.
Mr. Kelly. Is that a second? Commissioner Jordan. Mr. Black.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear all suspend the rules and let all three applicants come up and speak on the reasons applying for this application.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Second by several. Any objections to the suspending of the rules? If there are none, we will allow the applicants to speak, assuming they are here. Let's see, I see Mr. Hartley, is that him standing in the very back? And Mr. Kelly and Mr. Gammon, I did see him. So come forward, Mr. Hartley, and you may speak to our group, and then the others will be ready to come forward.
My name's Tom Hartley, and I've served on this board for a number of years, and I'm pleased with the progress that's been made out there. I'm retired, I have the time to give, I enjoy the public service, and I'm willing to continue serving with your support. Thank you. Any questions?
All right, thank you then, Mr. Hartley. Let's see, let's go with Mr. Gammon. He was nominated next from the Steering Committee. Yes, sir.
Commissioners. I'm prepared to ask for your vote on the Workhouse Board at the Correctional Work Center. I've served my country for three years, I've served this county for thirty-three and a half at the Sheriff's Office. I've got two and a half years of correctional training federal. Your resume I handed out, shows my background. I think it's unquestionable as to what leadership I can add to this, that I can contribute to the Work Center and carry on where it's at at this time. This past year, there'd been some changes there, there was assistance in that, and we want to continue given that. I've been here at this courthouse back thirty-three and a half years ago. I remember this was still the judge's chambers, our judge's courtroom. Jury chairs were over here. Some of you I've worked with for many years, some for many, many years. Ms. Ely, I'm not trying to tell her age or anything, but I was here when we had forty-two commissioners, and those were just jim-dandy days for the Sheriff's Office, trust me. But I'll assure you that being on this board, I have a faithful heart in serving it, I have the experience to do the job, and I just ask for your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Gammon. Mr. Kelly.
My name's Grant Kelly. As some of you know, I've served on this county commission for a number of years, but I'm on the school board at this time, and I've served on the Workhouse Board for a number of years. The reason I would say that I need to be reappointed is the fact that we have made some changes, and they've been positive, as it was mentioned, but the main reason is there that there's separation that is needed between the Sheriff's Department and the Workhouse Board. And I won't go into detail with that, but it's pretty obvious that they have, the law requires it, and so that's the reason I want to stay on the board, to make sure that that would be continued. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We've heard from the three applicants then, and we have three that have been nominated, and we will have to have a roll call vote here. And, excuse me, Mr. Black.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to disclose, my wife works for SO in adult detention. I was up under the impression, the county attorney sent me an email that it might have been a complaint made against me on the voted steering. I'd also like commission to know, Mr. Grant Kelly, he is a school board representative, and I would think that it could be a conflict there also with the ones maybe voting for him. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else before we vote? Here's what we're going to do, we're going to call the roll, and you will vote for two of these three that have been nominated, and the clerk will record this.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sandlin.
The last applicant, Mr. Kelly, mentioned something about against the law for sheriff's representation. If our attorney, Mr. Cope, could comment on that, I mean, we don't want to do something unlawful for sure, so I wanted to see what he was talking about right there, if there is anything.
We will let him address that, he has reviewed that.
There is no prohibition or problem with Mr. Gammon serving on the Workhouse Board. He's not being appointed as a representative of the Sheriff's Department were he to be selected. He is an individual. As an individual, he can run for that position if he so chooses, and so there is no problem legally with his candidacy.
Okay, thank you then. Commissioner Allen.
I have a follow-up question, Jim. As a Rutherford County employee, is there any issue with him being compensated for being on this board?
No, there is not an issue with him receiving compensation in that capacity. We have looked at that also.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just felt, I feel that we have three very highly qualified applicants for these two positions. I just felt that the Work Center has made strides forward. I like the direction it's going, and the man that's been on there for, I believe, two terms, I think all twenty-one commissioners should have the right to choose.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Farley.
I know legally I don't have to do this, but I want to, Mr. Cope, you and I've had a discussion that I think a complaint was said that I did not vote or disclose my vote on, with my son working in the Sheriff's Department. The way the law reads, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is the person has to live in your household. Is that correct?
That is correct. For the Code of Ethics of the county to apply, your sibling, a child, would have to reside in the home with you in order for that to apply to a given situation.
Well, I just wanted that to be stated publicly, and also too, I have a problem with someone coming up here and giving false information about saying something violates the state law, and I think Commissioner Sandlin just got that cleared up, you know, so I, that's, I'm glad you asked that question, Commissioner, because I'm glad that got cleared up, that false statement.
Okay, is there anything else before we take the vote? Now we'll ask the clerk then to call the roll, and each commissioner will then be, have the opportunity to choose two of these three. So you will name those as she calls your name. Adam Clerk.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Mr. Hartley and Kelly.
Commissioner Black.
Hartley and Gammon.
Commissioner Jordan.
Gammon and Kelly.
Commissioner P.
Kelly and Gammon.
Commissioner Cook.
Hartley and Kelly.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Hartley and Jordan.
Commissioner Farley.
Hartley and Gammon.
Commissioner Jones.
Hartley and Gammon.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Hartley, Gammon.
Commissioner Turner.
Hartley and Gammon.
Commissioner Allen.
Hartley and Gammon.
Commissioner Stevens.
Hartley and Gammon.
Commissioner Jordan.
Hartley and Kelly.
Commissioner Baum.
Hartley and Gammon.
Commissioner Coggan.
Hartley and Gammon.
Commissioner Young.
Hartley and Kelly.
Commissioner Phillips.
Hartley and Kelly.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Hartley and Kelly.
Commissioner Ely.
Hartley and Kelly.
Commissioner Gooch.
Mr. Hartley and Mr. Kelly.
Commissioner Surrino.
Hartley and Kelly.
Just a moment.
With that vote, then the commission has selected Mr. Hartley and Mr. Kelly. Now we will continue with the elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. We also need to confirm the appointment of Judicial Commissioner Sharon Trautman, and I move for her approval.
Second from, is that Mr. Turner? Commissioner Turner. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We also need to confirm the reappointments to the Insurance Committee of Bill Sellers and Greg Hall, terms to expire in 2012. Donnie Hester term to expire in 2011, and I move for their approval.
Second, Commissioner McAdoo. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And one last confirmation, and that's the appointment to the Insurance Committee, Susan Boney, to fill the unexpired term of Edwin McKnight, and that term is to expire in 2011. I move for her approval.
Second, Commissioner Farley. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Commissioner Phillips. There's no unfinished business. Now we will start the reports by the standing committees, and I will report to you, even though on the agenda we have a Purchasing Committee month to report, that report has not been provided to you, it wasn't available, so that will be on the next month's agenda at the commission meeting. So then we will move to the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee with Commissioner Ely.
Item L two A, General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Pet adoption and welfare services, increased revenue, contributions, and gifts, $5,000. Increased expenditures, custodial supplies, $2,000. Other supplies and materials, $3,000. Information technology from reserve for encumbrances, $12,612 to unassigned fund balance, $12,612. From unassigned fund balance, $12,612. Also data processing supplies, $5,958, to furniture and fixtures, $18,570. And this is to properly record the expenditures for that furniture. Resolve the sixteenth day of December, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Does anyone have any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item L two B, a resolution authorizing the transfer of Wheel Tax Litter Control Position from County Clerk's Office to the Sheriff's Department and a related budget amendment. Whereas an agreement to transfer the Wheel Tax Litter Collection Officer Position, which is a Pay Grade seven, Step ten, from the County Clerk's Office to the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office is being proposed, whereas the Wheel Tax Litter Collection Officer will replace a Patrol Officer Position, which is a Pay Grade five, Step three, at the Sheriff's Office. And whereas the title of the Wheel Tax Litter Collection Officer shall change to Sergeant Wheel Tax Litter Collection Field Training Officer. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other necessary officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute the agreement to transfer position, transferring the Wheel Tax Litter Collection Officer Position from the County Clerk's Office to the Sheriff's Department. A copy of the same being attached here to is Exhibit one, and incorporated herein by reference as of set forth herein at length verbatim. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows, to remove the salary- And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows, to remove the salary and benefits for the remaining portion of the fiscal year from the County Clerk's budget, and rebudgeting a portion of the salary and benefits to the Sheriff's Department budget. County Clerk, decrease expenditures for deputies, $28,597, and the related benefits for an increase to unassigned fund balance of $38,892. Sheriff's Department, from unassigned fund balance, $12,921, to other salaries and wages of $10,724, and the related benefits. Resolve this sixteenth day of December, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, was that Commissioner Young? Any discussion? Commissioner Jurnigan?
On the second page right here, number nine here, said, "If the court finds any portion of this contract to be illegal or otherwise, unenforceable remainder of contract is still in full force and effect." What does that mean, Mr. Cope?
That basically means, Commissioner, that if a court were to look at this agreement and find that any particular one section or multiple sections of it were, were not held to be legal, that that would not invalidate the entire agreement. The rest of the agreement would remain in place. So if Section Four, for example, were held to be improper, then that would not invalidate the rest of the agreement. The agreement would still stand, only Section Four would not be included in that, in that example.
The reason I was asking, that's the first time I've seen one when there's transfers questionable that you could be. By saying that, I want to make sure there ain't nothing there that we could be expecting some kind of lawsuit.
No, I don't, I don't think that's any indication of that. That's more or less boilerplate legalese-type language. It's not, not unusual in these types of agreements.
Okay, okay, any other questions? If not, you're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item L-2C, a resolution authorizing the transfer of Patrol Officer Position to Human Resource Coordinator and related budget amendment. Whereas an agreement to transfer a Patrol Position, which is a Pay Grade Five, Step Three, from the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department to the Human Resource Department is being proposed. And whereas the title of the Patrol Officer shall change to Human Resources Coordinator. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the County Mayor and all other necessary officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are here authorized to execute the agreement to transfer position, transferring a Patrol Position from the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department to the Human Resource Department. A copy of the same being attached here to is Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows, to provide funding for the salary and benefits for the Human Resources Coordinator for the remainder of the fiscal year. Human resource, from unassigned fund balance, $25,971, to other salaries and wages, $17,873, and the related benefits. Resolve this sixteenth day of December, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Coggan? Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
And record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item L-2D, an ambulance service fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Emergency medical service, from assigned for public health and welfare, $40,000, to maintenance and repair of service vehicles, $40,000. Resolve this sixteenth day of December, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Farley? Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
And record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item L-2E, a resolution authorizing a narcotic therapy management program. Whereas it is being proposed to implement a narcotics therapy management program with Cigna Pharmacy Management through Rutherford County's self-funded Employee Insurance Fund at a cost of 11 cents per member per month, or approximately $6,600 annually. And whereas prescription drugs account for 25% to 30% of all drug abuse in the United States, and an estimated 31 million Americans have used painkillers without medical need. And whereas narcotic abusers have a direct cost that is approximately three times higher than that of non-abusers. And whereas, based on third quarter pharmacy utilization, approximately 40 individuals met the guidelines for the narcotic management program. And whereas it is proposed that Cigna would create detailed patient profiles to identify members who exhibit medication use patterns that may be indicative of narcotic misuse. Whereas it is estimated that the narcotics therapy management program would generate a potential savings of approximately $88,000 to Rutherford County's self-funded Employee Insurance Plan. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the County Mayor be authorized to execute a contract with Cigna for a narcotics therapy management program at a cost of 11 cents per member per month, to be paid from the Employee Insurance Fund, effective January 1, 2011, with the program to be reviewed after one year. Resolve this sixteenth day of December, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Serrino? Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item L-2F, a resolution authorizing the issuance of $10 million in general obligation capital outlay notes for the purpose of refinancing the 2008 general obligation capital outlay notes. And this is renewing a capital outlay note that will come due April the first. A resolution authorizing the issuance of interest-bearing general obligation capital outlay notes of Rutherford County, Tennessee, in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $10 million, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said notes, establishing the terms thereof, and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of tax for the payment of principal thereof and interest thereon. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Jordan? Any questions regarding this? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
And record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item L-2G, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of offer from the Tennessee Department of Transportation to convey a permanent easement for the construction and maintenance of a drainage facility on State Route 99. Whereas the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation will be making road improvements to State Route 99, Salem Highway, with the Sheriff's Department being located on said road frontage. And whereas, the State of Tennessee has offered to pay to Rutherford County the sum of $36,200 to convey a permanent easement for the construction and maintenance of a drainage facility, and to allow the Tennessee Department of Transportation to go upon the above referenced property for the purpose of proceeding with the construction of the improvement. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the County Mayor be authorized to accept payment of $36,200 from the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation for access to the property on State Route 99, Salem Highway, in front of the Sheriff's Department facility, as described in the warranty deed, a copy of the same being attached here to as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And additionally, to authorize the County Mayor to execute an agreement of sale and a right of entry with the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation. Copies of the same being attached here to is Exhibit Two and Exhibit Three, incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this sixteenth day of December, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Jordan and McAdoo and others. Annette, okay, Mr., Commissioner Jordan is second. Commissioner McAdoo has a question.
Okay, only $36,200, is it going in general fund, Sheriff's Department budget, or where this money's going?
Commissioner, Ms., Ms. Nolan?
When I said budget, did not make that determination, so without any information from the commission, I would have put it into the general fund.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item L-2H, to approve the 2010, excuse me, the 2011, the 2012 budget calendar. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the 2011, 2012 budget calendar be approved. A copy of the same being attached here to is Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, with the adoption date for the 2011, 2012 budget scheduled for June 27, 2011, at 9:00 a.m. Resolve this sixteenth day of December, 2010. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner P. Second, any discussion? All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to suspend the rules to add another budget amendment to our agenda. It was inadvertently left off our agenda.
Motion for Ms. Ely to suspend the rules. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan? All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Continue on, please.
Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Highway Fund be amended as follows. Capital outlay from highway equipment, $50,000. Highway and bridge maintenance, road signs, $50,000. There was some discussion in Public Works, and the chairman of that committee will be presenting a resolution later on in opposition to this, but this was sent to budget from Public Works, and I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin? Discussion? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fellow commissioners, I would urge that we all vote against this. Just a little history, it came to Public Works. Mr. Williams came and asked for $50,000 to replace road signs throughout the county, and he said at that meeting, it could be up to $400,000 total to replace all of the county signs. And then in the paper this morning, I saw where he had thrown out a figure of $500,000. An agency in Washington, D.C., decided that every county and municipality throughout the country should replace all of their signs because they weren't good enough, I guess. And apparently, they've gotten some flak for that. The Secretary of Transportation, the other day, said that he was going to open this rule back up for public comments for 45 days, and we're at about day 15 or day 16 right now. So we still have 30 more days, and that tells me that if they reopen the rule, they're open to changing it, or possibly repealing it. And if this is the case, I don't know why we would go ahead and spend $50,000 on replacing signs if it turns out later that we never had to do that. We have more important needs. We have roads that need to be resurfaced. We have equipment that'll have to be maintained, and, you know, replacing street signs just to make them comply with this is going to be throwing $50,000 out the window. I don't have a problem if a street sign is stolen or damaged in an accident, or if it's faded out and has to be replaced, to make the new one comply with this, to make it easier to read and so forth. But I just can't fathom spending a half a million dollars just to replace all the street signs throughout the county. So I would urge, until this ruling comes back from the Secretary of Transportation, until we know exactly what we have to do, I would urge that we all vote no on this tonight. And if we're lucky, we won't have to do it. And if we do have to do it, we can come back and, and deal with it in a couple of months. So I would urge you all to vote no.
Other discussion? Commissioner Jurnigan?
Mr. Stevens called me this evening and discussed this with me, and I told him that I would talk to road superintendent for tonight. I talked to Mike, and the road superintendent and the road board has voted to go to this system, and County Highway Department's already purchased equipment, started putting up signs, put up about 30% of them. Now, Mike says, regardless, they don't want to go back, because it probably cost you no wood if you went back to where you was. So I understand what Mr. Stevens is saying, and, but they're going to have to have money for signs, to replace signs for the rest of this fiscal year. And far as replacing all of them, we could still send his resolution on, but according to the road superintendent, he thinks he's going to need money to keep putting up signs on theft and replacing what else. And we, we could instruct him to, ask him, we can't instruct him because the road board could overrule us, from my understanding on the law, but we, we could tell him, slow down on the replacement, and just replace the ones that is damaged and so on and so forth till we hear back, but he's saying that he would like to go ahead and see this money approved, or they, you know, if it didn't use it all, it'd still be in their budget, it's coming out of their budget.
Other discussion? Commissioner Schaefer, and, and Mr. Turner?
Just a quick question. I was under the impression that this bureaucratic law that came out, so to speak, or policy, was only for stop signs and street signs such as name, name signs, if I'm not correct. And we were only originally, I thought, going to purchase the equipment to do the street signs. And that's different than every, you know, than all, for curves and speed limits and all that. That's something that's, I don't thi, I didn't think was part of this policy.
Mr. Turner, let's let, excuse me, let's let Mr. Turner in, and we'll come back to Mr. Jurnigan, because I think he can answer the questions that Mr. Schaefer has just brought up there, but I had recognized him first. Commissioner Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Part of my concern, I understand what Commissioner Jurnigan is saying, but if, I don't want to send over $50,000 if there's a chance, from what Commissioner Stevens referenced, that we might not even have to do that. We might not have to make those changes. And I know that some of the signs have already been changed, and that's fine, but stop at the ones that we've already changed, and I don't think that there necessarily be any reason that we would need to move those 50,00, that $50,000 over if there's a possibility that that mandate might be pulled back in light of what Commissioner Stevens said. I wasn't aware of that, so I appreciate him bringing that to my attention, but that, that's my concern, and as a result of that, I don't want to just vote on sending money over that we might not be needing to spend. That's $50,000 of taxpayer money. It might not seem like a lot in the grand scheme of things, but that's a lot of money. And that, that's my concern with this, is if we're not going to have to do that and that mandate gets pulled back, then I don't want to send money away that, that we could use somewhere else that, that they might need in the road department.
Question I was going to ask the county attorney next, and I'm sure it's Question I was going to ask the county attorney next, and I'm sure it's what Mr. Williams is going to ask. They got a road board there. This money comes in from state and stuff, comes through the road board and system for them to prove and all, and I think if you look at road laws and all, I'm not sure we've got a right to overrule them, that they can't use their own money out there. He's got a right to transfer it from one fund to other than they want, it's just courtesy of bringing it forward to commission, I think.
Well, I haven't looked at it recently, Commissioner. You may be precisely correct, the road board is an independent board, and it does have funds within its budget that it's authorized to spend, but I'm not familiar with how your budget's structured relative to this particular issue, so I would have to reserve judgment until I look further at it. Maybe Ms. Nolan will know.
The main question I've got is how much money are we talking about, you know? A little hot air is going a long way tonight. But, you know, the, what was it, half a million dollars you mentioned, and then we were talking about this resolution was for fifty thousand, which I don't have a copy of it since it was left off the agenda, so that's one reason I'm asking, but we've also, is it on there? Okay. But also, if we've already put up thirty percent of these, then the highway department has basically encumbered part of this, so around fifteen thousand dollars, so, you know, that's money's already been spent, plus the equipment that they paid for to make this stuff. So there, I just want to know how much money are we actually talking about?
I don't have that answer. I mean, I know the numbers have been quoted as thirty percent, and I think how much was in the original amount that was appropriated, Ms. Nolan, do you remember that?
How much was appropriated for?
Have they already spent in that particular line item?
I don't, I don't, I don't have that.
I thought they said it's about fifty thousand dollars had already been spent, but I'm not sure.
He's asking fifty thousand dollars to be transferred into the sign. You know, if you got stop signs, road signs, street signs and all, total, you're going to have to fix them. This, this money would last till next budget year, and Mr. Williams, from my understanding, if we pass this other resolution, he's not going to move forward putting other signs up. But he wants money in his, and they do too, to put signs up, so I think for him being elected official, I don't think he's going to waste your money. I don't see no matter transferring it like he wants it, and if this other passes, I think he's going to do what the commission says. I don't think he's going to waste no money.
Okay, Commissioner Jones.
My question is, does he have money to replace signs right now, or is this money just to, I'm talking about broken signs, or is this money just to put up, just to change out the signs to be, you understand what I'm saying?
Yep. If you appropriate this money, it's used for either purpose, replacement signs or new signs as they so, you know, show a need.
They out of money period in signs, is reason he brought it forward. That's the reason, that's the reason he asked him for a transfer.
Commissioner Farley, then Commissioner Jordan.
So the way I understand, Commissioner Jordan, from answering the question is, if they don't have any money in the budget, so if someone gets out here and starts stealing signs, stop signs, they don't have the money to actually replace those, those type of signs, is the way I understand, is that correct, Joe?
Commissioner Jordan.
I know I've spoken to some road board members and also the road, highway superintendent, and none of them are happy about this new bill to have to replace these signs, and they're not going to spend a penny. They don't have to spend above and beyond, but that is a federal law, supposedly requirement that was passed, it's not going to be real easy to get turned around. This is money within their budget, this isn't new money. They would probably rather have the money for highway equipment to buy more equipment with, and so if we move the money over, they can keep on putting up the signs as they see fit. They're going to slow walk this the best they can until this is settled in court or whatever, and they're not going to spend any money, they don't have to, but there are signs knocked down, stolen daily, and I don't have a problem with moving the money over within their budgets, not new money, and, because they are good stewards, the road superintendent's return the money or come in under budget every year that I've been up here and stuff, so they're good stewards of tax dollars, and it is within their budget.
Thank you, all right. Any other discussion before we vote? Commissioner Turner.
From what I recall, though, when this was presented to us, Commissioner, and forgive me if I'm wrong, the point behind it was that this was a federally mandated program, and I don't remember any discussion about repairs or anything like that, and that, that changes things, but I wish that I would have known that early on, and forgive me if I didn't, but my understanding was this was about the federal mandate, that they were needing to move this money to be able to keep up with that mandate, not just for signs that are broken or need repairs or have been stolen, and that changed the dynamic of it. I just don't want to move it if, if there's a chance that it was just straight for the mandate, and that might be overturned at a later date. I don't know why we couldn't wait thirty to forty-five days until those public comments have been closed, and then see if that mandate is still going to go through, and then we could go ahead and, I don't have a problem moving it after that decision's been made. And that was, that was my point in the first time I spoke.
Commissioner Jordan again.
Like I stated a while ago, I go over my first comment. Mr. Stevens called me this evening before the meeting. I told him I couldn't answer him, and I would check with Mr. Williams, and that's what I did. And I asked him, and he said that, that particular budget's out of money. They did ask for fifty thousand, because he was going to continue saving some of them, changing some of them out, but he said himself in good faith, if they passed this other, he'd hold up on putting others up, but he needed money if he needed signs for whatever. I don't think he's going to spend more money out of the budget than he ever has if you transfer this over. If anybody knows the highway department, as long as he's been in there, anybody's been up here, McAdoo been here thirty years, they ain't never been out of line. So I don't think he's going to waste no money whether you transfer it over or not. He's going to do what you tell him to do, if you pass this other, if you do transfer it over.
Okay, we've had a healthy discussion. Any other comments? We're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Thirteen yes, eight no, motion passes.
Okay. There is no report from the Health and Education Committee, no report from the Property Management Committee. Now we're ready for a report from the Public Safety Committee. Commissioner Farley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First resolution here tonight, commissioners, is for the retiring deputy sheriffs to be able to get their service weapon and their badge, whereas it is the desire of Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to recognize and honor deputy sheriffs retiring in good standing after twenty years of service, and whereas for many deputy sheriffs, their badge and service pistol has special meaning and significance, and whereas since such equipment has economic value to the county, its gift to an individual should be authorized by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that upon the retirement and good standing of a Rutherford County deputy sheriff with at least twenty years of service with Rutherford County, the retiring employee shall be presented his or her badge and service pistol after such weapon has been rendered inoperable by removal of the firing pin. Such badge and weapon may be mounted on an appropriate plaque and presented in a suitable ceremony to the deputy. Be it further resolved, this resolution shall apply to all retirees after September one, two thousand and ten. Resolved this sixteenth day of December two thousand and ten, and I so move, Mr. Chairman.
And Commissioner Schaefer, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Next resolution is like all the other ones we have with juvenile detention center with some other counties. Whereas the attached contract between Rutherford County Juvenile Detention Center and Gibson County for Housing of Juvenile Offenders, a copy of said contract being attached hereto as Exhibit One and incorporated herein at length as set forth verbatim, is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the contract with Gibson County for housing of juvenile offenders. Resolved this sixteenth day of December two thousand and ten, and I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second from Commissioner P. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. There's no report from the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Now we're ready for the report from the Public Works and Planning Committee. Commissioner Jordan again.
Public Works and Planning Commission's got two resolutions tonight. First resolution will be to approve road book and drainage easement for next year, and a second resolution will be to forward a resolution of Congress representatives of the county opposing asking for repeal of unfunded mandates to change road signs, or in the alternate, send the money to make the change. Whereas the Tennessee County Uniform Road Laws of nineteen seventy-four has set out various civil and criminal counties for the working on private roads by the county highway department and personnel. Whereas the road board has approved the list of Rutherford County roads as submitted by the road superintendent, and whereas the private act authorizes the Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements requires the county legislative body establishing official list of recognized public drainage easement. And whereas the road board has approved the list of Rutherford County roads and public drainage easement, whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of Rutherford County roads and public drainage easements as submitted by the road superintendent. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approve the list of Rutherford County roads and public drainage easements as submitted by the road superintendent in accordance with Tennessee Code Anna Day five four dash one oh dash one oh three and five four dash one oh dash one oh four. These roads and public drainage easements shall be the only roads and public drainage easements which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolved this sixteenth day of December two thousand and ten, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Turner, excuse me. Any discussion? All in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Whereas the United States Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration has promulgated rules and regulation in accordance with congressional authorization that results in an unfunded mandate for Rutherford County in particular and all other counties in the state of Tennessee, requiring the replacement of all road and highway signs that do not meet new highway sign regulation. And whereas the federal government has failed to provide any funds for the replacement of said road signs and has placed this financial burden squarely on the shoulders of Rutherford County taxpayers without notification or any support, whereas such an unfund mandate is prohibited by the United States Constitution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that in respectful request and notification, the congressional representatives of Rutherford County that the Rutherford County oppose said unfund mandate, and respectful request that the same be repealed or alternated, alternative funded. Resolved this sixteenth day of December two thousand and ten, I so move, Mr. Chairman.
And a second from Commissioner Turner. Commissioner Stevens wishes to speak, and then Commissioner Jordan, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, after the Public Works Committee voted to spend the fifty thousand dollars, I suggested that we send this resolution to our senators and our new congressmen and ask them to sponsor legislation in Washington, D.C. and actively support it to repeal the unfunded mandate that we have here in front of us. In our system, we have a system of federalism. You have a central government, and you have political subunits, which we know as states. They're supposed to be separate. If you look at the Constitution, Article One, Section Eight, nowhere in there does it say that Congress has the authority to regulate county roads. That's not in there. It does say that Congress can regulate interstate commerce. There's three parts to that. You have the channels of commerce, which would be roads that go interstate or between states, the instrumentalities that, that use those channels, which would be like boats, possibly cars, maybe the internet, and then action that substantially affects interstate commerce, which is economic activity, pretty much anything the Supreme Court has defined that as interstate commerce. But again, nowhere in there does it say that Congress has the authority to regulate roads that are in Rutherford County. So this, this fifty thousand dollars that the commission just voted to spend, it was an unconstitutional thing that was delegated to that agency. I don't think that we had to follow that since it was unconstitutional, and I hate that we did spend the money on this. We need to send this resolution to Congress and let them know that they need to follow the Constitution and mind their own business. I'm just baffled if they want to regulate roads in, in counties throughout the country, and they've got a budget up there to balance that they can't do. So we need to leave issues related to local government to us, and that's what this resolution does, and I would recommend that everyone support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it very much. I find myself in an unusual position of agreeing with Commissioner Stevens on just about everything on this thing. Generally speaking, as we all are well aware, unfunded mandates, while sometimes quite good, a few of them perhaps, we could argue about which ones, almost always result in higher taxes, without question. Now, this is a pretty bold statement in here, and I taught the Constitution for many years, and I, if it's, if it is prohibited by the United States Constitution and doesn't fall into a couple of clauses there, I would be shocked, but I do know this, the Rutherford County Commission, as smart as, well, at least you twenty people are, the Supreme Court will make a decision on whether something's unconstitutional or not, and it would have to be challenged and go through a whole court system, it'd be years. So I just want, I'm going to vote for this, and it would be nice if Congress, somebody in Congress would actually read it and take us seriously. I suggest to you that they will not, and that whatever they want to do is exactly what they've already done, be my judgment. However, the Commissioner Stevens' point is, I think, well made, and standing on a principle, I think I understand it and I admire that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, again, thanks to Commissioner Stevens for presenting this, and I think he so eloquently spoke on it, the, the issue is not whether anybody pays attention to it or not, that is a big issue, but the point is we need to make a stand somewhere that unfunded mandates have got to stop. And with respect to the republic, there's, there's federal, Mr. Stevens just talked about it, we need to have as limited government as we can, and we need to have as strong local government as we can. I think this is a good first step where we make sure, whether it's on deaf ears or not, the point is that we're doing something for the taxpayers of Rutherford County to make sure that they know that we're just as fed up with it as they are, and that's what they sent us up here for. So I thank Commissioner Stevens for presenting this in, in our Public Works meeting, and again, I encourage everyone to, to support it so we can try to start drawing a line in the sand and, and get serious about this, and let's do something responsible at the local level where we don't have to worry about the federal government getting involved in stuff that they don't need to be involved in based on the Constitution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak before we, Mr. Stevens speaks again. Continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would request a recorded vote on this.
A recorded vote, excuse me. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
What was it?
Twenty-one yes.
Twenty-one yes. Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any other business they'd like to bring before the body? We have a couple of people here, Commissioner Cogan and then Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to announce to the full commission that our regularly scheduled Steering Committee meeting in January, which would typically be on January third, has been rescheduled to January eighteenth. Of course, that will be emailed out to you and everything, but I wanted to give you special notice because that will be when our state delegation will be here with us. If you all would like to be in attendance, that'd be great. If you have any things that you want to bring up, or any questions that you want, you would like for the committee to put before- like for the committee to put before them, please email those to me, call me with them, and we'll make sure that we get those talked about. Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've got on my calendar for June the twenty-seventh, the Planning Commission is scheduled to meet at nine a.m. that same morning, and maybe I could be wrong, if one of the other Planning Commission members would correct me, but if, since there's a potential conflict, I would request that your office work with the Planning Commission, maybe to change that Planning Commission date.
January the twenty-seventh, is that what you?
June twenty-seventh. He's concerned about the budget.
Oh, I'm, excuse me, June the twenty-seventh, excuse me, sir. Okay. We will have to check that out, I don't have the Planning Commission on my little calendar here, but we will make a note of that, and we will work with our finance department in rescheduling the June twenty-seventh date, if that's necessary, or we'll schedule, reschedule one of them, whichever one would be the most appropriate somehow, if that'll be okay. Any other business anyone wants to bring before this body? There being no other business, we wish all of you a Merry Christmas, and a wonderful period of holidays over the coming few weeks. We are adjourned.